Okay, good evening, everybody. Meeting number forty-two is now called to order. This is September sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, five-thirty P.M. We're in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And thank you to the young one in the diaper. We appreciate seeing you tonight.
She appreciates me.
All right. Roll call, please.
Rinker.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Graham Murray.
Here.
McCambell.
Here. First on the agenda tonight, we have a proclamation for Recovery Month. Peanut butter?
Your honor, I have a proclamation, whereas recovery from mental and substance use disorders, including co-occurring disorders, is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness. Treatment and recovery services for mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders is effective, and people can and do recover in our area and around the nation. And whereas addressing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and encourage those in need of help to seek appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas to help more people with lived experiences achieve and sustain recovery, the United States Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, and Alcohol and Drug Dependency Services invite all residents of Burlington, Iowa, to participate in National Recovery Month. And now, therefore, we, the City Council of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty-nineteenth as Recovery Month. And we call upon the people of Burlington, Iowa, to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies to support this year's Recovery Month theme, which is "Join the Voices for Recovery: Together We Are Stronger," and to celebrate the thirtieth anniversary of the Recovery Month observance, signed and sealed the sixteenth day of September twenty-nineteen. The Honorable Shane A. McCambell, Mayor, and this goes out to Nicholas Foss. Come on down.
I'd like to thank the City Council of Burlington and everyone here that attended today. We understand now that there are twenty-five million Americans in the United States that live with a substance use disorder. Less than ten percent of those individuals receive appropriate treatment prevention services throughout their lifetime. As substance use disorders gained wider recognition, understanding that it is a chronic fatal disease of the warding control pathways of the brain, now is a time, more than ever, for us to support efforts at recovery. Rather than taking only a punitive approach toward treating addiction and addressing substance use disorders in our society, we must, we must focus on the recovery efforts that are available to us. There are many resources, evidence-based programs, and programs like ADS, Young House, First Resources, and other programs even in our own city here that are available to help people with these problems. And we know, just as was read in the proclamation today, that treatment does work, recovery can happen, and prevention is essential. And so, I hope everyone will take a moment, maybe even this evening or sometime this week, and look up addiction recovery on Google, or even looking up addiction and the brain on Google, and learn a little bit more about what's going on today. Take a look at the voices, excuse me, faces and voices of recovery. It's a website that has a lot of information about what's going on today throughout the nation in this recovery movement. And so, it's an encouraging time, but it's also an urgent time for us to address this healthcare issue that's right in front of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nicholas.
All right. Nicholas, thanks again for coming down, and those that came down with them, thank you. Thank you for coming down. We appreciate that. We appreciate that. Hold on a second. How many you got?
Do we need to get a picture of everybody?
Let's do some recovery bracelets. Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm gonna get these for the cool kids. That's the life that I tell everybody. You get one, too. All right. Thank you. One more time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, folks.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Mayor's Awards, and I'm glad to be giving this one out. Had to beg him to come down. Took me about a month to get him here, but they're here, so want to recognize them. This is a couple that, they've been in Burlington for I don't know how long. I remember Kevin from school. But every time I see them in public, it always just makes me smile. I saw you one day going for a motorcycle ride. It was a real nice day out, and she was all hugged up on him. He thought he was somebody special, and I did, too. And I want to recognize special couples. I think people that stick together and make it work, I think that's a good thing, and I think we need strong families. Man, I'm just, I'm just proud to know you, too, but I'm glad to be giving you this award tonight. So, thanks for coming down. Be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being Model Burlingtonians. Your commitment, loyalty, mutual love and respect toward one another is admirable and needed in this community. Your example is appreciated. You both helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. And on September sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, this Mayor's Award is presented to Kevin and Mona Ash. Come on down. Your bracelet, he's supposed to take you up for dinner afterwards. That's why I'm here, so if you don't, I'm gonna take his half off. I gotta take your taping with the...
Shane tries to break me.
Stay fifty years, you get a good second. I'm not changing it up now. Can I, could you guys please have a word before you take one out of here? Give me a hug. Thanks for coming down. Appreciate you bringing it and pick up.
Well, thank you, guys, for honoring us like that. That's pretty cool. We've been married what?
Thirty-one.
Oh, thirty-one years. You have to tell me.
That was a test. That was a test.
The standing ovation of my book.
No doubt. No doubt.
I would like to say it was easy, but again, it was a blessing. It's always been rooted in God. Otherwise, it would never have worked for us, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for all you guys do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry, I remember one time somebody asked me, they said, "Well, how come somebody gave a Mayor's Award to..." They said, "How come they got a Mayor's Award?" I said, "Because I'm the mayor, and I gave it to them." So, that's how that works, 'til I'm out of the seat, and then some other mayor can give it to them. All right. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item One Consent Agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the City Council and won't be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous, minutes from previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports and bonds. Now, we have five resolutions. The first is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa, and Alliance Energy Incorporated for all-night lighting service at the dead end of Sunset Avenue. The third is a resolution approving fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen street finance report, road use tax. The fourth is a resolution approving purchase of HESCO flood barriers with Two Rivers Bank and Trust. And then the fifth is a resolution approving the purchase of temporary construction easements for the two thousand nineteen Locust sewer separation. And then we also have two public hearings set for October seventh. The first is consideration of sale of property locally known as sixteen oh seven Osborne Street, City of Burlington, with conditions. And then the second is consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of property, I'm sorry, a portion of right-of-way located adjacent of eighteen fifteen to eighteen forty-five Des Moines Avenue, Burlington, Iowa. And then we have two appointments. Animal Hearing Board, Richard McIntyre, and then Descom Control Board, Matt Rinker. We appreciate both of you for your service. Is anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items from the consent removed? Mr. Shanahan? The birthday boy.
Don't rub it in. Leon Shanahan, eighteen twenty-one Mount Pleasant Street. I'd like to have a discussion on Item Four under the resolutions, please.
Okay. Anyone else from the audience for removal? I see none. Counsel?
Yeah.
Want to get a motion, please?
Your honor, I have a motion to approve all listed under Item One Consent Agenda, with the exception of Resolution Number Four.
Second. Moved in second. Kathleen?
Rinker.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Okay, first resolution.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving an amended agreement between the City of Burlington and the Burlington West Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce for the use of the Port of Burlington building by the chamber.
Second.
This resolution has come about as a follow-up to the Chamber's request to consider taking over the space that had formerly been occupied by the Iowa store. Their request incorporated two things. One, taking over the space utilized by them so they could reconfigure how they had their space usage done down there, but also to take over the selling of the items, comparable items that had previously been done in the Iowa store space within the Chamber space. This is something that they feel that, for them, with, as they already are staffing the site, it's something that they can accomplish both functions that were done previously in two separate locations through one site. Counsel had seemed amenable to that. This item and the following one are reflective of moving forward with that request. This amends our agreement with the Chamber to accommodate, or to reflect the idea of leasing the space, and it adds language within it that says that we will have a separate actual lease agreement. We hadn't had a lease agreement in place previously. It reflects the idea that we would take action on a separate lease agreement for the space. The time of this, or the term of this agreement isn't changed from what's already in place. It is already set to expire June of two thousand twenty-one, and it maintains that same timeframe.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none, including Leon. Yes. Just kidding, you birthday boy. Counsel?
Skirting well, getting covered in the work session.
We most certainly did. Kathleen?
Rinker.
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
McCambell?
Yes, please.
Number two.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving a commercial lease agreement between the City of Burlington and Burlington West Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce for exclusive use of portions of the Burlington Port building.
Second.
Moved in second. Jimmy?
And this lease agreement is the one reflected in the previous resolution, the previous agreement. It's for a dollar for annual lease agreement for a dollar. It's, I'm sorry, the term of the agreement is two years, automatically renewable. The talks about their use of the premises is delineated on a exhibit for their portion of the space. We're responsible for upkeep of the building. They are for the upkeep of their interior space. They also are responsible for utilities for their direct portion of the facility.
Sounds good. Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel? I'm here. Kathleen, let's vote.
Rinker.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Yes, please.
Number three.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving additional asbestos removal with Servpro in the Memorial Auditorium.
Second.
Nick McGregor?
Good evening. This resolution is an addition from the work session. We received more information as Servpro began to remove the other asbestos. There was some asbestos wrap on some of the piping, and so they found some additional asbestos that we would like to remove. This resolution would authorize essentially two proposals by Servpro to remove asbestos. The first one, I think, is listed as Exhibit A, is for four thousand six hundred. That asbestos is something that insurance will, will cover because it was something area that was affected by the floodwaters. The Exhibit B, or proposal number two, for eight thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars, is not covered by insurance because it is, it was found above where the floodwaters affected the auditorium. I do recommend approval of both memo, or both exhibits, the proposals to remove the asbestos since they're there. The funding source to remove the asbestos not covered by insurance would be hotel motel tax or the fund that, or the amount that's reimbursed to us from FEMA to cover that.
The hotel motel tax at eighteen thousand would cover, we set aside twenty, is it twenty-seven thousand annually right now that we're up to? Somewhere in that neighborhood, specifically for auditorium improvements, there's, want to say there's forty to fifty thousand on hand now. We don't have any other allocated projects for use of that, though the one that we would look at as a major issue down the road would be the HVAC system, though we're taking care of a lot of that with the boiler and changing the way the controls are done. But it makes sense to pay for it out of there, and we do have the funds available.
Sounds good. Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel? Satisfied? Kathleen?
Rinker.
Yes.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Number, Resolution Number Four.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll read that. We had a... Resolution Number Four from the consent is a resolution approving the purchase of HESCO flood barriers from Two Rivers Bank and Trust.
Need a second.
Second.
Mr. Shanahan? Wish I'd call you birthday boy tonight. Do you have a preference?
Leon will be just fine. Leon Shanahan, eighteen twenty-one Mount Pleasant Street. I guess after the mess that we had this year, I don't know why we're spending money on HESCO barriers again. You're just not going to be able to hold back the Mississippi River with HESCO barriers.
Just trying to make sure we've got what we need to protect our equipment and the important stuff, but I appreciate your consistency, Leon. Point taken. Anybody else from the audience? Counsel? No? Kathleen, let's vote.
Rinker.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay. We appreciate you guys sitting through this long drug-out meeting that has taken forever, I'm sure, for some of you, just teasing. But this is time where we will have comments from the audience. I would just like to, before we do comments, I would just like to remind some of you who do have your first-time commenter, this isn't for a back-and-forth, so we're going to take in everything that you have to say. And if you want, if you desire more comments from council members, please stick around and we'll definitely have some back-and-forth with you before we leave, but we want to hear from you tonight. So, is there anybody, comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Nancy Courtney, twenty-six oh nine Clearview Drive, and I'm here as a concerned citizen because we've had ten shootings in this town since June, and you're our leaders, and we trust you, and I know you're doing a great job. I don't know where it begins, at home, in the schools. We all need to get the guns off the streets, the drugs. We need more mental health facilities so that people can get the treatment they so need. And right now, there's a prayer vigil going on at the Port of Burlington, and I was going to go there, but we chose to come here instead. And I know you're probably at Wits End, too, because we're frustrated. We don't know what's going on. It's, like I said, it's a lot. I think drugs and guns and parents aren't able to take care of their children. I don't, I don't know what's wrong. I'm not blaming anyone, but I just hope that we can get some peace in our community. That's it.
Thank you.
Nancy. Amen.
Tim Scott, twenty seventeen South Fifteenth Street. I'm here for the same reason as Nancy, my concern for the actions that have taken place over the past few months, the escalation of, of crime, and, and then also being a victim here lately, recently, of a crime. Pretty simple. It was someone decided they needed the copper pipe off one of my air conditioning units of my commercial building more than I did. They took a buck and a half worth of copper, and it's going to cost me a thousand dollars to fix it, and that's a true estimate. They, they released six hundred pounds of Freon, or whatever it is, six hundred units of Freon into the air because the air conditioner was turned on at the time. So, and this is probably the tenth or eleventh time in the last year that I've been a victim to some petty crime, but it adds up. I mean, it just, it just adds up. I'm, I'm really tired of it, but I'm very, very concerned about the more serious crimes. And I don't know that I have any solutions, but I have some suggestions that you might follow up on. Mayor, you have the power, and you alone have the power, to contact the governor's office and ask for help, and I would do that. You don't need the council's approval. You don't need the staff's direction. You can pick up the phone and call her and say, "We got a problem down here. Do you have any help, any suggestions for us?" She's going to listen to you. If you do it through the staff, she's not going to listen to them like she's going to listen to you. I've been told that time and time again, and I think you need to pick up the phone, and you need to call Loeb SAC, and you need to call Ernst, and you need to call all the rest of the representatives, both federal and state, and say, "We've got a problem in Burlington, Iowa. We are actually working day and night. Our officers are stressed to the max. They can't do anymore. We need some help." There's, there's, you know, there's Burns Grants, there's COPS Grants, there's everything else. We need some grants that don't have stipulations. We need, we need traffic safety money from the governor's office so that they can do additional traffic stops and, and search vehicles for, for weapons. The conversations that I've been hearing, that I've been involved in, more and more people are buying weapons to defend themselves. We're, we're becoming a weaponized city greater than any of these nations that we're over playing cops for in Afghanistan and, and the rest of it. It's, it's frightening, is what it is. I got woke up from a text message from my daughter about the firefight that our police officers were in. I didn't sleep the rest of the night. My concern for those officers, not knowing whether they made it through it or not. They were kids. The, the guys that work the night shift are pretty young. And I, I hope they stay around for our sakes, but I don't know after something like that that I could do that. I think I would be looking for something a little safer. We've, it's just gotten way out of hand, and, and God bless the chief and everybody else. These guys have the training, they have the ability. What they don't have is the manpower. This is, this is something they've just not adjusted to. Gary Thomas warned of this twelve or thirteen years ago. He saw this coming. He said the people in his neighborhood were scared. He saw it coming. He knew what he was talking about. I warned about it, too, and darn near got lynched. I was, probably didn't warn about it the right way, but it's, it's coming true today. And, and it's, it's not your fault. I'm not angry at anybody other than the, the bad people. I just want, I want to see something get done. I'll do whatever I can. I, I'm putting up cameras, I'm putting up more lights in the back of my building, I'm going to put cameras on my house. I don't feel that I, I should have to go to that expense, but to protect, protect me and mine, I feel that I have to. And that's, that's sad. And, you know, you, you, when you talk to the, to our congressman, be a bit inventive, make some suggestions. Maybe we need to put up a camera system. There was a COPS program from, from the, from the U.K. They've got cameras in their downtown area, and they're monitored by, by dispatch, and they stop problems before they happen. They've got a, they've got a quite, quite interesting way of, of handling it, and their cops don't even carry guns, but they, they, they take care of business. I, I don't know what else to say other than I don't want to live here. I moved away for about eight years in, in, in another lifetime, in the military, and then working for Montgomery Ward, getting transferred around the country, and I missed Burlington every day I was gone. I wanted to come back. I called my parents almost every day just to see what was going on. I looked forward to getting the Hawkeye newspaper, which I got on a more regular basis than what I get today, but, and sooner, anyway, but I, I, I really, I wanted information about Burlington. If I'd have had the internet, I may never have come back because I'd have had all the information I needed, but I wanted to be back here. I wanted to find a way, and I, God bless my father for making it, making it happen, but I'm not so sure I want to stay anymore. There's, there's, there's other cities that experience the same problems we have, but there are a lot more cities that aren't experiencing it. They don't put up with it. They stop it before it happens. Do what you can, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim. Yes, ma'am. Just so I can say this on the, since we're live, though, I do have to address that. I've made those phone calls, Tim, but I didn't have suggestions. I was just asking for what they could do for us. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Phoebe McNeese. I live at ten twenty-five North Tenth Street here in Burlington. I am a concerned citizen here about the violence as well.
Can you give me that address again, please?
Ten twenty-five North Tenth. I do actually have something for the council, if I may bring it up. It's something that I was looking into. I'm a little, I'm worried for my son going outside to play, playing around the block, going to the park, and I didn't want to sit on my butt and not do anything. So, that's why I'm here, and the other reason is because I looked into what other cities have done when they have violence in their communities. And one thing that I found that sounds very promising is called the Cure Violence Program. It's done all over the country. It's, a police chief in Los Angeles actually recommends it. It's, it reduces violence by up to seventy percent in the communities that it is there. In Brooklyn, it reduced gun violence itself by forty percent in eight months. I think it's something that is worth looking into, so I did bring copies of the information, if I may give it to the council.
Please do. Please do. And drop off a copy over there to the media table, too, if you don't mind. Thank you. And thank you for coming down and being proactive. I gave you one of those. Thank you.
Yes, I have one, too, but I gave it to my son.
Well, you keep that one, but thank you for coming down with something in your hands.
Is that this one?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I have to leave. I have to pick up my son.
That's all right. That's all right, but thanks for taking the time to come down. Thank you.
Tom Courtney, twenty-six oh nine Clearview, Burlington. I wasn't going to intend to say anything tonight, but I, yesterday, Nancy and I attended a rally at, at the park on Angler Street, and there were probably a hundred people there. They had a nice little cookout and stuff, and some games and things for the kids, but it struck me, a lot of those folks were wearing a T-shirt that had pictures of everybody that's died in Burlington, of violence in the last, I don't know, year or so, two years or however, a fairly short period of time. There were like ten, nine or ten pictures of, of people on that, on that, most of them young, and I'm just appalled that, 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 you know, I'm not blaming anyone either. I'm just appalled that, that we're letting that happen. We're doing something wrong. I don't know. I, as you all know, most of you know I'm on the school board. Maybe we're missing something in the schools. I think maybe we are. I don't know where we're missing it, but we're all intelligent people. We all know how to do things. Why can't we fix this? I don't understand why we can't fix it. And I know you don't respond to questions, you can't respond to questions here, but I just, seems to me that maybe Phoebe had some good ideas there, I've not read that, but it just seems to me there ought to be a way for this town to come back and stop these, these senseless, senseless deaths. It just, it just doesn't make any sense to me, and if I had a magic wand, I'd fix it right tonight, but I don't. I just think that, that, if, if there's one thing I would ask you all to do is to consider a community-wide meeting. Have a, have a meeting, and have a lot of people, and I know they're a pain, everybody complains about everything but what you're there to talk about. I know how that works, but I would like to see us have a community-wide meeting here and, and see what folks think, see what people think the problems are. see what people think the problems are. I, I just think that would help, if we, if we ask people what's going on, so, thanks.
Thanks, Tom. Well said, well said. Yes, sir.
I wanted to add one other thing, that's, it's extremely concerning tonight. On the five o'clock news, this young lady over here said there was going to be a discussion on, on the violent crime in the city, and I thought I would see a packed house down here. And that's, that's very, very concerning that it's not, and maybe people didn't have that channel on or the TV on, but I would think there would be a lot more people down here if they had, if they had heard that broadcast, and maybe they've just given up.
Oh, I forgot my, I think it's, my name is Samantha Helberg, and I live at eight oh three North Fourth Street, and I'm a concerned citizen. So is she. I just wanted to say, first of all, thanks to everybody, I know she was making noises, so I apologize, but I appreciate it. So first, thanks for your time, for allowing the people of the city to come talk. This is my first time, so I'm super excited. And I had posted something on Facebook, asking people to come down and talk to you guys, and I kinda felt from some people's responses on there that, that it should be something, "I can't sit there, 'cause then they can't hear me." Here, do you wanna come up here? Okay, so just hold on one second, darling, here, hold this for mine. Hold that. Okay, thank you. It is not by any means solely on your shoulders, and it shouldn't be. I think as leaders, you guys might have access to information of maybe how other cities like our size, what they have done to address the issues, you know, thinking of, you know, actual ideas that we can implement, and not that it, it can never just be you guys, you are, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. It has to be everybody. So then I guess my question would be, what can we do as citizens? Oh, sorry, I didn't follow my notes. I wanted to say thank you to the three of you that emailed me back, like personal, sorry, personal messages. I really appreciated that reaching out. And the reason I'm here is, you know, for her, and I have three other kiddos, and I grew up on Marietta Street, there was drugs and violence and all of that stuff, but I think that it's just been all the, you know, the violent deaths of young people, so what can we as citizens do? As you go and you research these issues, what, what can we physically do? And I know there's vigils and prayer meetings, which I think is a wonderful way for us to come together and feel that camaraderie of people that think the same, think the same way, have the same mindset, but I think we need to move above and beyond that, and it's up to all of the citizens to do that. And I don't think there is one right way or wrong way to do it, we're gonna have to start trying a multifaceted approach. So, if and when you come across stuff, as you do research, trying to, you know, better our community, if there's things we as citizens can do, have those community meetings and express what they are, and that it is going to be, you know, for all of us. And, and this isn't packed, I know. The local elections, I teach, I'm trying to push that local election part of it, but like, I have to leave to go to my kid's soccer meeting, so sometimes I think life just prevents us from getting there at a specific meeting, but if we can start to see suggestions, you know, coming from our leadership, or from other members of the community, of things we can actually do, we can really make this a much safer place. Because right now, I know a lot of people don't feel safe, and not the first thing I hear, "We'll just move." "I just bought a house, a block from our teenies, I am not gonna move. I want to build this community to be a safe place where people wanna be, they wanna come, and we can go out and do whatever and feel safe." And I think we can get there, but it's gonna be a whole group effort, and I just applaud the work that I'm sure you've already done, and I would say be, be very forward in what we need to do as citizens, and what we can do to help that process for you guys. And I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And you said plenty tonight, thank you for coming down.
Oh, can you say bye? I asked you to stop for game, I'm saying you so much. You don't wanna leave.
Mr. Shanahan. Thanks again, Sam, thank you for coming down. Thank you, Sam.
Leon Shanahan, eighteen twenty-one Mall Pleasant Street. I, I think the easiest way to look at this is, we've had a lot of concerns about drugs and whatnot in the community. The two most dangerous substances in combination are testosterone and alcohol. And when you have a situation in the community, despite what's been said about a worker shortage, there's a shortage of good-paying jobs. When you have a bunch of young men who can't support a family, this is what you get. We need to bring good-paying jobs to the community, and some of this will go away, and it's not gonna happen overnight. But, you know, when my grandfather was a young man, if you had a strong back, you could go work for the railroad when you're eighteen years old, provide for your family, not really have to worry about it. The jobs we have in this community, there's no way that a single parent, or even two parents, with the wages that are paid, can support a family. And the anger and the frustration is what you're seeing on the street right now. We really need to do something about quality jobs for young people.
Thank you, Mr. Shanahan. Anybody else from the audience? Mr. Tusslin?
Just a reminder, our Tiger Project, we're having a public meeting next Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, at six PM here in City Hall Council Chambers. Just update on the status of the design for Main Street, Jefferson Street, and Riverfront, our consultants will be on hand again, but wanna keep individuals and people in the community informed on this process, and what's going on for the design, and the changes that will be happening with the Tiger Project, so we encourage people to come to that meeting next Tuesday, six o'clock here in the council chambers.
That's it?
Yep.
From the top, or from the bottom, or from the middle?
Yep.
All right, then. Kathleen?
I have nothing.
Okay. Peanut butter.
Just a reminder, it's National Burlington Restaurant Week, so patronize your local restaurants.
Counselor?
I have, I have nothing, except thank you, everybody, for coming down. Appreciate your comments.
I do want to address, I have a couple of comments. One, I just have to remind people of this, that you can't legislate good, you just can't. There's, there's no law out there that you can, that's, that's going to make people be good. So, that's one thing where we need to be mindful, it's, if we can't legislate, it's gonna take, it's gonna take people working together to get it done. The other thing I wanna say is, is that maybe we need to, maybe we need to rethink the role of the school. The kids are in school for, for the most part of the day, and maybe, maybe we're focused too much on, on the testing scores and not enough on being citizens, and I think that's something that seriously needs to be considered by the school system. You know, if you're putting out convicts that can, that get straight A's, what's the point, if they're still gonna be convicts? So, no, I think they, they spend the most of the time in the school, that's the time where we can, where we can get something done, and I think we need to change the way things that we do, and I know that's a school problem issue, but it becomes a city issue. So I think that's another angle that we can take, is what can we do in the school system that can prepare these kids to be, for society, so that they know how to talk to each other, that they know how to, to get along? I, I think that's a serious, serious leg in that. For the people that say, "What can we do?", know your neighbors. You know, most people in this town, they say they wanna help, but you don't know who your neighbors are. If you don't know who your neighbors are in just one block stretch, how can you help them, and how can they help you? That's where it starts. It always starts small, and then it builds. So I, I would say, people in your neighborhood, if you don't know your neighbors, go around, get to know who your neighbors are, and say, "Hey, I live at this address, and I just wanna know who you are, and if there's anything wrong, or something like that, or that I see, or is there something I should look for?" It takes a little work, but if we wanna, if we wanna see this community, if we wanna see the violence go away, those are some things that are gonna start. Know your neighbors, and when, that, when you do, you know things that, that, that don't look normal. Turn the lights on, that's one thing that we started a while back, that we were trying to light up dark areas of Burlington, to try to, to make it harder for people to do things. We know that a lot of evil things are done in the dark, so I would encourage you, if you have some dark areas in your neighborhood, contact the city, maybe we can light it up for you, make sure you leave your lights on at dark times. And, and the other thing that I was reaching out with, Mr. Scott had mentioned, he said, "Reach out to the, to the governor, and, and talk to them, tell them you need something." I didn't know what to tell them that we need, except for more help, you know what I'm saying? And it would start with some staff, so I like what you said about grants with no stipulations, my friend, I'm all for that. It's hard to find those, but I'm all about it. I would like to tell the community to just, to be patient, as we try to get through this, we, we know realistically, as a whole, we've got a solid community, but we do need to root out the, the crime and the violence in this area, and that's gonna take everybody working together. And if you see something, don't second, don't wait, don't second-guess, just call the police. Just call the police, they'll come. If something doesn't look right, telling you, just call the police. If you know your neighbors, and you see somebody down in their yard or something like that, call your neighbor, and make sure, "Hey, are you home?", you know, "There's somebody in your backyard?" Those are the things that we used to handle them back in the day, when we talked together more, and we knew who our neighbors were. And if we can get back to that mentality, I think that would help us out quite a bit. So, that's all I've got, again, for those that are dealing with loss, and those that are still struggling. We all struggle, and we're doing this together, we're a community, and we sink or swim together. But, we're not sinking, but we've definitely taken some shots, and we need to address that, we can only do that if we work together. So, I just wanna encourage everybody, again, know your, know who your neighbors are, let's, let's work together, and don't be afraid to, to call down to City Hall, or to send us some emails. We do listen to what you say, there's just limited, it's limited on what we can do, but we hear what you say. Mr. Recker?
Well said.
Oh, well said.
Oh, I think I said one second. Yeah, you hit the nail on the head. The only thing I would say to, to go along with that is, a lot of communities have problems like this. These are very complex problems that have developed over an extended period of time, and they're gonna have complex solutions, they're gonna take just as long to be effective. I made that comment to somebody last week, and it's true. There's no one thing that we can do that's gonna solve all of our problems, and we are only as good as the support that the community provides. We can make suggestions, we can create new policy, but if the support's not in the community for law enforcement, and the support's not in the families that are within our community, they're not gonna be effective. So, my heart goes out to the families that are involved in our mourning this, this week and last, and as a council, I know we look forward to trying to tackle these problems, so, that's it.
Well said. James?
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
I'm gonna try and stay pretty generic when I talk a little bit about some of the violence going on. We've had some incidents over the last couple of weeks, some shootings, non-fatal, fatal, involving police, not involving police, and I'm gonna just talk a little bit and share some of the stats that I've ran. And I started doing this before last week's incident, and had spoke with some of the news media about it, but, and I look at incidents throughout the year, and at the end of the year, and we're about three-quarters of the way through two thousand nineteen, and, and to keep it in perspective for myself, so I don't get caught up in the number of events that have happened most recently, and do a knee-jerk reaction. It kinda brings, brings me back to that, because, you know, we're busy. We're busy at the police department, my investigators are busy, the officers that are on the street are busy, and, and they keep themselves busy, and sometimes they go from call to call, and they answer and respond to what, what we're hearing about the shots fired call. And I see it firsthand, the bravery that comes from those officers that go to them calls. They're not, they're not sitting and waiting, they're, they're going towards that. And, and it's not an easy thing to do, and when you get the phone call in the middle of the night, it's not easy to answer it. So, just so you get a little perspective about where we're coming from at the department, it's not an excuse by any means, and they'll still respond to those calls, and that's their obligation, that's the oath they took, and they'll continue to do that. And when they work tires, tirelessly at night, throughout the day, at the end of this year, when we start talking about overtime budgets, I think I'm gonna probably go way past what is budgeted, just to put it in perspective. I haven't run the numbers yet, but I think there's some expectations there, that it's probably gonna be a little bit higher this year, just so we're aware of that. That's not to say we won't keep doing it, because, and they're not wasting time sitting around. Some of the stats that I've run are aggravated assaults, burglaries, homicides, non-fatal shootings, and that would include assaults with a firearm, and both that and intimidation, and then rapes thrown, thrown in there as a violent crime, robberies. And rape would include forcible fondling, forcible rape, forcible sodomy, incest, sex assault with an object, and statutory rape. And I ran it all the way back to two thousand fifteen, for those incidents that we report nationally, and that's actual incidents that are reported to the FBI. So, for aggravated assaults, just to give you a little perspective, in two thousand fifteen, we were at eighty-two aggravated assaults that were reported, this year we're at forty-two. So we're almost at half in the first nine months of this year. Burglaries, the highest number that I have from fifteen to two thousand eighteen is two hundred and forty-two. This year we're at a hundred and fifty-one. Homicides, we had three in two thousand fifteen, two in sixteen, three in seventeen, zero last year in two thousand eighteen, and then so far this year, three. So, non-fatal shootings and assaults with a firearm are, we're at six in two thousand fifteen, twelve in sixteen, thirteen in seventeen, seven in eighteen, and then four so far this year. That's assaults with a firearm, that were actual incidents reported. Shootings, non-fatal shootings, intimidation, intimidation with a gun, somebody points a firearm at someone, or shoots in their direction, and actually hits no one, that we can, we can actually report as an incident. Twenty-eight in two thousand fifteen, again in two thousand sixteen, the same number, in seventeen, it was actually seventeen of those, then twenty-eight in eighteen, and then this year we're at ten. Rapes stay about consistent, anywhere from the high twenties, and this year we're at twenty-two, and the highest we got was thirty-eight last year in two thousand eighteen, and that includes all the categories that are listed. And I have these stats available, and have been distributing those to local media, and if people want them, I'll, I'll forward them to them. And I know I'm rattling off a lot of numbers. Robberies, twenty in fifteen, thirty in sixteen, sixteen in seventeen, and eighteen, two thousand eighteen there was eleven, and this year, so far, we're at fourteen. And then I go and I look at actual calls for service, and the, the topic that normally comes up is the shots fired calls. And shots fired, we'll get a call of shots fired, and we go there and look for evidence of actual shots fired, whether it's bullet holes, casings, witnesses that say, "I saw the person with the firearm shooting it," and, you know, sometimes we'll get a report of somebody saying, "Reporting one gunshot." We'll go there, talk to some of the neighbors, and, and they'll say, "I heard it, and it was over there, and somebody shot off some fireworks." So, sometimes we get those calls, but we go and look, you know, the direction, where it come from, and make sure we can find evidence of it. So the number reported in fifteen was forty-six, the highest was in two thousand sixteen, of seventy-four shots fired calls confirmed, and two thousand seventeen, fifty-nine. Last year we was at twenty-two, and this year we're at thirty-three. So there is an uptick in shots fired calls for us, and us actually going there and finding evidence that, that it did in fact happen. Gun calls, where somebody may call and, and say, you know, "There's a person with a gun over here." And the highest number there was eighty-three in two thousand seventeen, and this year we're at forty-three. So there's confirmed calls of, of someone saying, "Hey, I saw a person with a gun over here," is at forty-three. So those are, those are some of the numbers that I kinda wanted to just throw out there, just food for thought, and, and just to reassure you as the council, that our officers are, are working through those calls, and with the, the recent shots fired calls, the arrests have been made, those investigations are continuing, and those investigations become very complex and time-consuming, and so they're filling their eight-hour days right now with that, and plus we still have sex assaults that come in, child abuse cases, we have other calls that come in that, that they still take that upon as their load. So, when you talk about, what can, what can we do to relieve some of that, and it's probably personnel, and as I've talked about in front of this council, when someone leaves our department, it's a, it's a nine-month to twelve-month turnaround for me to get somebody back up to speed. So, I'm, I'm not, I'm not complaining, I'm not blaming anybody either, I'm just saying that, that, that there is legitimacy to, it takes us a while to get somebody back on the department. Years of service, I have, currently have eighteen officers that have under five years of service on the department, and they're very, they're very qualified individuals, well-trained, and I think some of that'll come to light here in the near future. They're well-trained, and we have, I know, and I'm very proud of that, the, one of the best FTO programs around, and, and we, we just don't depend upon the academy to do the training, we also do some back here. So, is there things that we can improve on? Most definitely. We critique ourselves daily, and what we can do better, how we can do anything that we do, that we think we've done great. that we do that we think we've done great, we still sit down and say, what, how can we do it better next time? So it's a, it's a learning process and, and, uh, by no means are saying those officers are not qualified to handle any call for service. They are. And, uh, some of those officers, uh, were out last week, so, and still continue to go out and do their job very well. So if you have any questions or concerns, please let me know. I know that, uh, some of the news media has contacted me and I've made some, uh, statements and that'll probably continue on the next week or so, so.
We appreciate your staff.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Uh, I guess a couple of things. Couple of, three, four years back, Tim, you were involved. We had a staffing plan that got presented to the council, uh, by Chief Beard at the time. It was a three-year staffing plan to, uh, look at adding, um, two officers a year for three years to get a total of six new officers. That was a result of the high incidence of, uh, shootings that, that we were seeing back in 2015, 2016. Um, there was, uh, a, quite a bit of community support to see us move forward with that plan at the time. Uh, the council did approve two new staff members in the budget that year. Uh, we've gone through the last two budget cycles and not followed through with the plan for the following two years. And I think some of that was a result of seeing the level of incidences down. Uh, this is, uh, this year has seen, it's not outside of the realm of what we've seen over the last few years, but it's back closer to what we saw back in 2015. It's not higher, if you look at the overall amount, but you, I think that you could say that it's much more concentrated into a specific, uh, few weeks, which make, brings it, highlights it to the attention. Um, but it is a serious issue and it's something that, as, as you go into the next budget season, uh, revisiting that staffing plan is worthwhile considering. Uh, but, uh, Chief brought up, as he talks about the youth of our, of, of our force, 18 out of, you have 45 certified?
Forty-four.
Forty-four now, budgeted for 45. Uh, 18 of them are five years or, or younger. That's an awful young force. And you, I don't know if that, uh, the crew that was on that night, if all of them were five years and under, but three of the, three of us?
Three years and younger.
Three years and younger, all of them that were reporting. Uh, we've got a, a, we've got a young force and that isn't looking to get any better as time goes on. Uh, it's, that's part of a dynamic that's not just here. That is a national dynamic that has seen a, a significant change in, in what happens with hiring and, and the ability to keep folks on. Um, the significance of what they do with their training program is very important. Our ability to make sure that our folks don't get burnt out is very important. As he talks about folks putting in, uh, extra overtime this year, we were, back in 2015, is a major concern with the amount of overtime that was going on at that point. And where you get to, to burnout and what that does to making the problem worse. Uh, we need to be careful about what we do with our force and how we make sure that we support them as we move forward. Uh, front, that's kinda talking about staffing level. Now you think about the context, what we have as a community. We have a, did you wanna go on that?
Yeah, I just, I just wanna, and I left this out and I was sitting back thinking, and Jim, you reminded me of it. Um, and I've talked to members of the community and I, I feel the support. I, I meet, uh, often with, uh, members of the community that come down and wanted to know what they can do and, and express their support of the police department. I hear it on the street and I hear it in the community. And I, I recognize that and, and I don't want the community to think that, that they don't support us, 'cause I feel it and I see it. And I remind my officers daily that, you know, we're doing this for this community and, uh, and they support us. So just to bring that to light is, it, it's not, uh, that we're not feeling that support and that, that keeps my officers going and keeps them working. And, and they do work tirelessly, but, uh, they're very dedicated to what, to what happens in this community. And if anybody feels, uh, I wanna say terrible about what happens in this town when we get those, uh, uh, violent crimes, it's those officers. And they sit down there and they think about what they can do to prevent it. So, and, and they ask for the community's help and they feel the support that we are getting. It's just, uh, some additional things that we can probably do.
Bob, I, sorry, I neglected you. You were on council at the time that we went through that staffing plan too. So it wasn't just Tim sitting in the audience that went through it. Um, some other things that, those are some, some of the steps that we've done or considered as we've gone through this over the last few years. Uh, there's a recognition that it's a problem that isn't just about our police, the size of our police department, though. Uh, you can look at our poverty level. We're, I don't know the percentage above, I think we're 50% above the statewide average for poverty. Uh, if you look at our income level, we're 20% below the statewide average. As you see that happen to a community over a period of decades. To your point, Mr. Shanahan, uh, when you have low income, you end up seeing a concentration of problems. It just happens. They, they kinda run, uh, coincidental. Um, so how do you address it? Well, there are, I think that it does ask for us to make sure that we're working with the ch- the chamber as you think about what jobs are coming in. How do we focus on making it be what's talked about as a living wage job? Uh, the school system, both the college and the high school have taken on a, a concerted effort from a building trades perspective, as an example, is the one that I'm familiar with, uh, to try to work and we build additional skills into folks to be able to give them a sense of purpose in life, to be able to not just have a life skill, but to be able to have a potential career, uh, that, uh, that you have an alternative, you don't have to, it, it, it's not a four-year college degree or bust. There are other options that are available. Uh, but those kinda focuses, we've partnered with that, providing properties for, uh, a new house construction, uh, as an example, a house for, uh, rehabilitation. Uh, those are things that are long-term things that have us small incremental impacts. And we need to make sure that we take advantage of those. Uh, the building bridges program, I mean, what did we have the ashes here for tonight? It was, it's, it's not that it's a direct response of the violence that's gone on in town. Um, it's, it's a response to where they've been trying to address these issues over the last several years. If you look at Mona, uh, the, the role that she plays with Young House and, uh, putting her heart on the line to build into people and build, build into addressing shortages that they have, whether it's, uh, economic, educational, uh, religious, emotional support, building that whole context of building up a person. Uh, she's poured her heart into it and her husband has, uh, been along for the ride. Uh, he has met every need that, uh, she's brought up to try to, to be a part of that effort. And we all need to be able to take time to be involved in that. Uh, we, as a community, can't succeed if we're not all taking those steps to be involved somewhere along the way to be part of the solution. Uh, so I guess I would have a, have a challenge that we all look for places to be involved, whether it's in the building bridges program specifically, uh, building into folks for, uh, having long-term options that are viable that, that create an incentive for, there is more to life than, than, uh, what the option is that, that we see with violence. Okay, I'm done with my talk on that. Uh, Typewriter Shop, uh, there's been concern as bricks have fallen off of that. That is owned by Downtown Partners, part of the Greater Burlington Partnership. Uh, they have had engineers in over the last several months trying to address it. They had originally, back in June, uh, gone through an assessment. Uh, they went out to bid and had the contractor online to, to do the structural repairs or on, on that northeast corner. They looked at it and initially, I think part of that was, they said there, there needs to be some structural support put on the inside. Eric's department said the same thing. Uh, they have backed out of that project. Uh, I think they brought in another structural engineer to look at the structure and trying to look at, uh, a way to try to save that, that facility. The chamber is trying to figure out which route they're going, whether they're, is this something that we say that we've, we've done as much as what we can? Or are there additional steps that can be accomplished? Uh, so the, the chamber has reached out to the state, trying to look for some additional funds. That's something that, to try to maintain the, the facility, um, as one of their options. I, I want, we don't have a, really a conclusion what Downtown Partners is doing as far as what their game plan is moving forward, which way they're gonna be going. I think it's gonna be towards trying to, to save it if possible. But do, I guess, for those of you, people who, who are wondering if action is being taken, they are trying to get something accomplished. And they will be bringing, most likely presenting something over the next few weeks, one, one way or another, for how they're moving forward with that structure. Um, and then I would like to address where our staff is on dealing with FEMA for reimbursement. Uh, we've gotten to spend, or I haven't, I, we've had different staff members who've gotten to spend, uh, a few hours the last couple of Mondays. Um, I think Don said he wanted to be involved more, if at all possible, as we move forward, 'cause it's so much fun. This is gonna be a different re- process for working with FEMA than what we've had in the past. They are much more, uh, involved on the front, hands-on. Um, as I think Stephanie mentioned, they've talked about spending a, a given day on a floor of, of the auditorium. That doesn't come without a cost. We've got, I, we're gonna have a lot of time wrapped up into this from, uh, Park and Rec, some of your folks, Ryan, particular, in particular, uh, down in Don's apartment, department. Um, we've got folks in engineering and property maintenance, specifically in Nick's areas that are gonna be, they're gonna have a lot of lost time from doing work that sh- they should be doing, uh, with this whole, uh, reimbursement process. And it'll be part, it'll be part of, it'll be reimbursable, but it still doesn't keep you from having lost work. So those are hidden costs that we won't see. We do get reimbursed, but it's, it's still, they're not doing the duties that they otherwise could be doing and it keeps them from being able to get some of the normal day-to-day stuff that people still expect to have done, done. So just, just to be cognizant, that is going on. That's it for what I have for tonight.
All right, just, uh, uh, we had some celebrities in the house tonight that I've just wanted to make sure that we recognized. Again...